Wait, tell Susie.
Oh, I got the thumbs up.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving. This is welcome to the Tuesday, December ninth, 2025 Planning Board meeting. Like to start with a pledge, please. Tonight's agenda is a little bit shorter. We have several that were removed at last minute. The Good Life Collective application, Lehigh Place, Plan Development District application, Element by Weston at Eastview Mall was also removed until the next meeting. So if you're here for any of those, you'll have to wait till January, and you don't need to stay, but you're welcome to. Few announcements upfront. Emergency exits are to your left and right. Restrooms are out back at two doors and to the left. Please be sure to sign the attendance sheet. If you haven't already, it's on the back table along with some business cards with contact information from the planning department. Also, there are copies of resolutions that we may read tonight along with the agenda. Please silence your cell phones so you don't disrupt the meeting, and take any conversations you may wish to have amongst yourselves out the back door and close the doors so that you don't interrupt those presenting before the board. Thank you. Meeting minutes.
So there were two minutes for October that went into a folder in the Dropbox. I don't think you guys were able to see. So I did talk to Susie. I'm going to send you them this week. If you let me know any review and changes, we'll post it online as a draft. And then January, we'll vote on it, but we're going to post it in draft form. So I'll send that to you in the next few days.
Thanks, Lisa. I think you said we received some correspondence?
Yep, we did receive two last minute. One was from Dave Anderson for Eastview Mall, and then the other was from Tammy Van Buren for Element by Weston. They were very late, so.
Okay, well, we'll be reviewing it the next meeting, so timing is fine. Board and committee updates. I see my guy name is not here, but Keith Maynard is, so. Planning board updates. Keith?
Good evening. Keith Maynard, project manager for the Town of Victor. Your next planning board meeting is January thirteenth, 2026, which is a Tuesday in this room at 7:00 PM. New to your agenda, and all three of these are public hearings, will be 7275 State Route 96 facade. Applicant is requesting approval to paint the exterior of a portion of the building and to add an additional tenant entrance, and this would be to the north side of the Hadlocks Building where the furniture store was. Item number two is AT&amp;T Singular Wireless, 701 High Street. Applicant is requesting approval to modify equipment installed on the 140-foot lattice tower. It will be included. It will include removing nine antennas, six radio units, three TMAs, and installing new equipment. No groundwork is proposed, and there will not be an increase in tower height. And then the third and final new item that we have is the Thirsty Turtle Site Plan modification. Applicant is requesting approval to install a temporary fence or a color change to the temporary storage structure located on the northeast back parking lot. Also proposed is a building lighting color change to coordinate with the holidays. Any questions? Thank you, everybody.
Okay, first item now on the agenda, Centola Site Plan. Baker Road applicants requesting approval to to construct a single-family home on two acres. This is part of the Benson subdivision in 2024, which we have seen previously. Good evening.
Good evening. Nick Graziosi with Gerber Homes. The Baker Road subdivision is a single-family home on a two-acre property, zoned R2. There are no variances requested. It is public water and private septic system. Perk tests were witnessed by La Bella. Perks were fast. Three perk tests. Holes stabilized in five minutes, seven minutes, and 17 minutes. Monroe County Water Authority has reviewed the plans and are ready to sign off, and we have provided the SHPO no-impact letter in the application. Do you have any questions?
Wes, I think there might have been some discussion on either DEC or both in this one.
We did get La Bella's letter, and I have responses to all the comments prepared.
Okay. Yeah, we released a letter today on this project. When the project initially came in, they hadn't yet done their perk test, but they've since done the perk testing. And we have a, just one of the items that we wanted to bring up is the site distance for the proposed driveway. And the proposed driveway is somewhat close to the intersection of Baker Road with Valentine Road. It's about 270 feet from the intersection. Typically, for a 40 mile per hour roadway, you might expect to see intersection site distance to be 500 feet for a left turn and 430 feet for a right turn. So the actual, what they've indicated on the site plan, the actual site distances are shy of what the standard would be. 270 feet to the intersection and 320 feet if you're looking up the hill. So I think we also have to recognize that, you know, the distance to the intersection doesn't provide for, even allow for that site distance. And people would be slowing down if they're coming down the hill to Valentine. They're going to be slowing down to hit that stop sign. Similarly, there's, or maybe an existing feature that's out there is there's a driveway on the opposite side of the road in pretty close proximity to where this driveway would be. So we did note that. I'm not sure if there's a way to improve that situation. I don't know that it's necessarily a showstopper, but it's an item that we noted.
Can I reply to that one?
Sure.
Yeah, so the driveway's been placed at the optimal location to balance optimized site distance. There's no other location to access the property with better site distance, so it's placed at the best spot. And the driveway being close to Valentine Road, vehicles are slowing down and not going the 45 miles per hour. That is the overall speed limit for the road. So yeah, it's placed in the best spot we can on the site. Without that location, it would only get worse.
There's also, if I'll make this observation, wetlands further up the hill that kind of precludes them from being able to even install a driveway anywhere but where it looks like they're placing it. Plus, I want to say it probably needs that extra distance to the house to gain up, get up the hill, the incline that's there. I don't know what's the grade of the driveway.
It's less than, it's 10% or less.
Okay.
I don't know exact.
If you had to shorten it up, you'd have.
Yeah, it would become steeper than 10%.
Okay. Anything else, Wes, that comes to mind?
Yeah, with regard to the updated wetland regulations that came into effect in 2025, the project is in what the census designates an urbanized area, so that's one of the sensitivities that DEC is now considering for when they're taking jurisdiction of wetlands. There appears to be a small wetland on the parcel near the road frontage. And just curious, have you guys submitted to the DEC for jurisdictional determination?
Yes, we have.
Okay, okay. Is there any response yet from them?
No response yet.
And I don't know how far. I'll have to take a look at whether there's a potential potential concern for, if that were to be a DEC wetland, the 100-foot adjacent area, whether they would be impeding on any of that. Let's see. Then we have some technical comments on the septic design. And I think that we would like to see updated plans prior to making a, prior to doing a resolution on this project.
Okay, open it up to the board if you have nothing else, Wes. Are you still skimming your notes?
No, that's it for now.
Joe, questions?
Good.
Okay, Al?
I'll start.
All right, Scott?
I remember this one came in last year, and the property owner or the property buyer insisted that we process the subdivision minus the site plan, and we said that we strongly advised that they do the site plan so that everything would fit together well, and we wouldn't have any issues at this particular point in time. My memory serves me right on this.
I recall that discussion. We could probably look at the minutes and confirm all that.
So I think that's worth considering. And then I guess I just have a comment on the wastewater system components, which are catalog cuts. I think if they go to the DOH manuals, which are if they go to the DOH manual, which is in PDF form, they can get the appropriate information for the detail sheet. These are just catalog cuts.
Okay.
Those are my comments.
Tricia. Okay. This is a public hearing. I'll open it up. Up the floor up. Anyone adjacent, neighbors, other public, have any comments or questions? Step right up, name and address, and we'll try to get your questions answered.
Good evening. Melissa Allen, 175 Baker Road. So I'm the driveway that's directly across the street, and I just want to understand the distance and the placement of the driveway. I couldn't quite tell from the map.
Yeah, you'll have to come up to the mic as well, so.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. We just want to make sure Lisa gets it on the record, any conversation that happens.
Okay. I would just comment that I know that people are coming down. Baker Road is slow for the stop sign, but they do come down pretty fast. I mean, we are challenged with our own driveway when pulling out, so I just feel like it's important to comment.
So have you, you have to come out of your driveway, turn left to go down to Valentine, correct?
I do, and it's a very sharp right turn to go up Baker Road.
Okay. How's your site distance to go up the hill?
It's okay.
Is it? Okay, but they're just coming off that intersection.
Yeah, especially coming down the hill. People come fast. Coming right onto Baker Road is a little challenging.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Al moves. Joe seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Public hearing's closed. Any further discussion or questions Wes indicated? Looks like we still need some information in order to.
Yeah, I think it would be worthwhile to have an updated site plan, and then also to be able to have a response from DEC on the wetlands. I think that would be helpful.
If on the, or that, if on your site plans, you could note the location on Sheet C102 opposite that driveway, where is the neighbor's?
Yeah, we can have the neighbor's driveway.
Yeah, so I mean, you don't need the contours and everything, but you certainly want to get that for comparison.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the plans, Wes? You got your notes, so.
Yeah, no, that's it. Just when they're addressing our comments, we'll make sure they've been addressed, the updated plans.
Okay, so if you can get us stuff in a timely way, we could probably fit you on the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, we can get them done.
Okay. All right, thank you. Oh, I should have known that. So the next item, Barber Site Plan. Applicants requesting approval to construct a single-family home on 18.2 acres on Benson Road.
Good afternoon once again. The property is zoned residential two. There are no variances requested. This is public water and a private septic system. Perk tests and deep holes have been done, witnessed by La Bella. Monroe County Water Authority has reviewed the plans and are ready to sign off. The site is not within an archeologic sensitive area, so no SHPO sign-off is required. Do you have any questions?
Start at the other end. Scott?
I just had the same comments on the wastewater system details that are just catalog cuts. That's all I have.
Okay, Tricia? Okay, Al?
Questions?
Joe?
I'm going to say no, but I'm not 100% certain on that. I can find out. Oh, really? That's cool.
Okay, I'll respond first to the railway one. I don't think they're going to make any changes to that area. Most of our clearing and work is going to be focused around the house, so during our portion of it, we're not going to touch the railway at all except for the access point where the driveway is. And on the conservation easement, I'm not 100% sure on the exact location of that yet.
Isn't the driveway on the railroad bed, the old railroad?
It is a portion of it, so just that one area we're planning to disturb.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, Wes, comments?
Yeah, so we are in the process of finalizing the review of the septic here on this particular project. We don't have a comment letter out yet. One of the, we did get an updated plan set, right? And we understand that the information that was missing from the other plans is on the updated plans. And it sounds like there's going to be a cut-and-fill septic system, but there was nothing previously submitted on the plans to indicate what that septic system was going to, I guess, look like. So I understand one of the perk holes ran at about 45 minutes, which is rather slow. And then maybe there were some very gravelly areas, and those places perked really fast. So that's going to involve, you know, a different type of septic system. So I've got Jody Allen at our office taking a review of the updated plans, and we hope to have a comment letter out maybe this week.
Are the wetlands subject to the same?
So that's a good question. This particular property is not within that urbanized area in the 2020 census and is also outside of the watersheds of significant flooding. So I don't know that we have the same comment with regard to proximity to DEC wetlands as we did the previous one.
Yeah, the building's placed pretty far away, and our disturbance isn't too close to the wetlands.
But we just have to be sure that the septic design is going to work.
David will work with you to come up with a good solution.
Yep, there's been some correspondence between the design engineer. Just, I think it was late last week. David Cox mentioned that he wanted to maybe meet with our designers. And I think we'll probably maybe have a phone call after we've had a chance to finish the review of the updated plans.
It looks like the leach field and the tanker are almost immediately adjacent to the driveway within like a few feet. Is that, that's not a problem for the driveway? What they're showing here, anyway, maybe you haven't had a chance to.
Yeah, I haven't seen the updated plans yet. With regard to separation distance from the driveways, I guess as long as the, well, there is going to be some disturbance of that area, given that they're going to, I think, replace some of the soils.
And they're using these underground arch structures
Yeah.
for the leach bed, which is different than I'm familiar with, but I'm sure it's a pretty common thing now.
Yeah.
Given changes, so that would be something I'd be interested in seeing your team looking at. As far as the length of the driveway, is it more than 500 feet? I was trying to scale it. I was using the scale on the top of the sheet, and it looks like it's eight or 900 feet according to the scale. But then if I look at the right-of-way for Benson Road, which is 66 feet, and I try to work off of that, it doesn't look like it's over 500 feet, so. Just curious about that. That sort of throws you over a threshold for driveway design and access from the fire department and all that.
Yeah, I don't think it's over 500 feet.
Because you're at the minimum.
Yeah, you'd have to have the wider road, and yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're at 12 feet. That's a minimum. It's kind of a tight radius at the base for a relatively large fire truck. And it's gravel, not paved? Is that the intent?
Yeah, that's the intent.
Okay. And then at the base, or at the house itself, it's a pretty marginal amount of space for a fire truck to do a turnaround up there. So I would ask between now and the next time, if you see this, that you take a look at that.
Okay, I'll have David take a look at the fire turnaround.
Okay. And this also is a public hearing. It's open to any public comment or questions. Is there anyone in the audience that have questions for the applicant? Being none, I'll consider a motion to close the public hearing. Al moves.
Second.
And Scott, second. All in favor? Carried 5-0. Public hearing's closed. Anyone else have any other questions since the conversation we've had? Do you have anything else for us?
No, that's it.
Okay, Wes?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay, see you next time.
Okay, thank you. Have a great night.
You, too. Item seven, item three, Forte Studios LLC Site Plan. Applicants requesting a change of use to convert 9,870 square foot of existing building space into a visual and performing arts center. 1290 Blossom Drive. This was a temporary home for the planning board for a year or two while they were building this building. So maybe some of you are familiar with that. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Joseph Johnson. I'm the owner of Forte Studios. Where things stand currently, as I reviewed the comments from Joe, Georgia, and then I responded to as many of them. I think you guys have those. I'm not sure, though, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, if you could kind of review your intent at the site, I don't think anyone in the audience has seen this yet, so.
So my plan is, in this building over at Blossom Drive, to open a visual and performing arts studio mainly for children. So in, you know, kind of like an after-school program for art classes, dance classes, piano lessons, you know, theater classes, stuff like that. And then every couple months, they have an opportunity to do a showcase or a recital or something like that for their parents to come and see what they've done.
And how many people, you said you're doing, that you'll have some, you know, lessons, but you're also doing some performance there and having large gatherings? How many people total? I think you originally had 175. Are you down to 150 now?
Yeah, I think I put 175 on the original application, but after going over the floor plan with code enforcement, I've put that to 150. And that's the worst case, including parents, the kids, and the staff, or any volunteers that would be there. During the rehearsals, it would be about 30 people there, assuming I have a full group of kids in dance class or in theater class. And then only during those instances on nights and weekends when the other businesses are closed, that's when I could potentially have, you know, anywhere from 50 to 100 parents. Kind of depends on how many kids are in the show, you know, how many relatives they bring.
Okay, you want to talk a little bit about available parking? Because there are multiple businesses here, and I don't know if you have enough parking if it were in the same timeframe as all the other businesses are open.
So the big thing there is, right now, a lot of those spaces are vacant. And what the landlord has told me is that the new places going in are nine-to-five offices. So I think there's a Johnson &amp; Johnson office in there. I'm not quite sure what the rest of the places are, but I've just been told that those are regular business hours. So any performance that I would have that would take up a lot of that parking would be a Friday night or on a Saturday or Sunday.
Okay.
I don't have any intention of doing stuff during the day as far as those gatherings. If I have something during the day that would conflict with those other businesses, that would be a piano lesson or a rehearsal where people are dropping off their child and then coming back and picking them up after a two-hour period of time.
Okay, so transient, non-business, normal business hours, anyway. Okay, thank you. Open it up to the board. Al, questions?
Just one question. Do you know what the total site parking capacity is?
For 1290, so the big lot over off to the side there in that picture, I believe, has 51 spaces, and then.
You have a printer? Please, there, if you want to use it.
All right, so over here is, I counted 51 spaces, and then up here around this building is another 20, quick, like 22, because I believe this whole thing gets to 73. And then these spots right here, I believe they may be assigned to 1286, but the landlord and management team have offered their support in regards to using that as overflow parking, if that would help alleviate some concerns.
You're very helpful. Thank you. Joe? Tricia? Okay, Scott?
I don't have any questions. I think it's a good use of the property.
Okay, as do I. Wes, any comments?
No, nothing for the board.
Straightforward in terms of use of the building. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience have any questions for the applicant? Being none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Moves, Joe seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing's closed. Unless anyone else has any other questions, personally, I think this, as Al said, is a good use of space. And appreciate your taking that on and adding that feature to the town's activities. So with that, we do have a draft resolution that I will read. So for the Forte Studios LLC, 1290 Blossom Drive, Application 36 SP 2025, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are six of them. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on December 9th, 2025, and identified no significant impacts, therefore be it, oops, now, let's see, and whereas the Town of Victor Code, Town Code Chapter 211271F2D allows for the reasonable Town Code Chapter 211271F2D allows for the reasonable reduction of parking spaces required in the overlay district and shall be permitted by the Town of Victor Planning Board. Resolve that the planning board will allow the reduction of parking spaces from 75 to 73 parking spaces be approved by the planning board, be it further resolved that the project Forte Studios LLC will not have a significant impact on the environment, and a negative declaration be prepared. Now therefore be resolved that the application of Joseph Johnson of Forte Studios LLC site plan entitled Forte Studios LLC site plan are received by the planning board November 4th, 2025. Planning board application 36SP 2025 be approved with the following conditions. Number one, conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan. Number one is standard. Number two, the comments from the code enforcement officer dated November 20th, 2025 be addressed. Ongoing conditions. Number one is standard. Number two, that a move-in permit be obtained from the planning board and building depart, from the planning and building department. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. So with that, entertain motion. Joe moves?
Second.
Scott, second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried five zero. So you're all set?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, our last item on the agenda this evening, Cheshire Ridge Preliminary and Final Subdivision. Cheshire Ridge, applicants requesting approval to create two new single-family lots on .74 acres along the south side of Cheshire Ridge. And this is an open public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Destro from BME Associates here on behalf of the applicant Cobblestone Creek LLC. We are requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval for the Cheshire Ridge subdivision located at Cobblestone Creek. Just to give a quick recap from our last appearance before the planning board on October 15th. All town staff comments, as well as all town engineer comments, have been addressed both in writing and on the updated plans that have been submitted. On October 16th, we submitted the filed subdivision map for Section 4 of Cobblestone Creek, which shows that the land designated for the two proposed Cheshire Ridge lots represents remaining lands of Cobblestone Creek Country Club. The land is not located in a permanent conservation easement area, nor was it ever designated as forever wild lands. Therefore, no restrictions were placed on these lands for future development. While it is unfortunate that the adjoining landowners place some of their landscaping on the Cobblestone Creek lands, Cobblestone Creek has listened to this board's feedback and recommendations. As such, they've offered both an option for the adjoining landowners to obtain a landscaping easement from Cobblestone Creek, and also an option to purchase either a five-foot, a 10-foot, or a 15-foot strip of land from Cobblestone Creek Country Club. Since Cobblestone Creek is organized as a 501(c)(7), they are unfortunately unable to gift that strip of land to the adjoining landowners as a discussion was started on that. We have provided copies of the agreements of the adjoining landowner, that the adjoining landowners have been provided. They are on file with the town now. Just as a reminder, the minimum lot depth for the new lots is proposed to be 127 feet instead of 150 feet. And this is to provide additional buffering between the Cobblestone Creek Country Club course and the proposed single-family lots. As such, we request that the planning board modify the clustering provisions that were established for the existing adjoining lots as part of the Cobblestone Creek development, and to allow a minimum lot depth of 127 feet for these two proposed lots. It should be noted, though, that both of the proposed lots are larger in area than both of the adjoining lots on either side of it. Lot one, proposed lot one has an area of .38 acres. Lot two has an area of .364 acres. While One Sheffield Court, which is the adjoining property to the west, has a lot area of .28 acres. And Eleven Cheshire Ridge to the east has an area of .35 acres respectively. So the proposed lots are in conformance with the adjoining lots within the neighborhood. In summary, Cobblestone Creek Country Club has heard the recommendations of this board and has made good faith efforts to accommodate the adjoining landowners and also to preserve their existing landscaping. Any agreement between Cobblestone Creek Country Club and the adjoining landowners can be handled separately from the subdivision application, either as a private easement agreement between the respective, between the respective parties should they choose to do so, or as a future lot line adjustment. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
So just one question. How would that be facilitated once the lots were sold?
They have the option to do it now. If they choose not to form an agreement with CCC, then, then that's really.
Is it open-ended? Or is there a time limit on the, the offers to the neighbors?
There was a time limit, I believe, on it. I'm not entirely certain the timeframe dictated on the agreement, but.
When were the letters sent? Do you know?
The letters were sent a few weeks ago. Yep. Okay.
Richards.
On the east.
Got it.
Yep. So one of the adjoining property owners, the property owner to the east, has agreed in principle to form an agreement for an easement agreement for the landscaping on the eastern property lot. To this point, Cobblestone Creek has not heard back from the adjoining landowner to the west.
So you're referring to the Richards? Is that correct?
Richards on the east has agreed to an easement, correct?
Okay, that's Eleven Cheshire Ridge. I'm looking at your site plan.
And again, I imagine there is a, there is a timeline for this. It's not an open-ended offer to the other neighbor then?
Correct.
I believe the other neighbors in the audience.
Yeah. Okay. Could you explain again about the landscape easement on, especially for the, I think it's Freitas? Property? Because they have landscaped onto this open space.
Correct.
And the way I understood the conversation last time was, I'm not, how to put this? I don't like the fact that you only have three feet from the house to the property line, no matter how this ends up.
Well, they have the option to purchase a strip of land to accommodate that, should they choose to do so. I mean, Cobblestone Creek has obviously made a good faith effort to accommodate both this board's requirements, recommendations, as well as the adjoining landowners. And as I mentioned, they have the right to develop their land too.
Was, was this a, a large cost to purchase? I don't know what a strip of land is worth or has been appraised at, if that's the case.
Yeah, it, the cost of the strips of land were noted in the agreements provided to the adjoining landowners.
Okay, did they have a choice about negotiating the price?
There's, I mean, they could, if they responded, they can negotiate, but you have to respond first.
Understood. And they're here, so we can address that as well. I really have a hard time not having this lot line adjusted to do this, but my personal concern is the location of the house within the side setbacks that you're showing on the drawing. Because if ultimately they choose to, or maybe a future owner of that One Sheffield Court chooses to buy that strip, now you're less, you know, it's a 15-foot strip in order, what is it, the? You needed at least eight feet, I think, right, or?
Eight feet was the side setback that was approved for the original Section 4 lots.
But the house was not built to eight-feet setback.
Yeah, they were, they received a variance from the ZBA.
So the landscaping, is that wider than the extra five feet that you would have minimum to comply with the original?
The extra five feet would at least get them some of their landscaping and then also add up to the addition, the eight-foot side setback in theory.
So the biggest concern I have is making sure that the side setbacks from both buildings can be achieved if there's a lot line adjustment in the future.
Yep.
So right now I see 20 feet as a side setback. Could you build, if it were approved this way, could you build this house up to that 20-foot side setback right now?
Yes.
So then, in the future, if somebody wanted to buy a strip at landscape easement and make it permanent, you would not end up with two 15-foot side setbacks if they built that house closer than 15 feet from that side, or 10 feet from that side setback.
Well, the proposed setback is 20 feet. So one of the accommodations that we are also providing is an expanded side setback to both of the adjoining landowners on either side. So right now it's proposed at 20 feet. The house could be built within 20 feet of the line. If they give up five feet to the adjoining landowner, they would have their eight feet. They would still have 15 feet, which is almost double the exist, the side setbacks that were approved for Section 4. So I think it's well within the limits for the side setbacks.
Yeah, I kind of need to work that through to understand what the implication is here. And if we needed some other form of restriction within that space between potentially two homes. Scott?
Um, how wide is the landscape easement?
It's to be negotiated.
Be negotiated?
Yep.
So it hasn't, doesn't have a defined width. I guess, given the sensitivity of the house to the west, perhaps that landscape easement can also include the word access in it, because I think the reason we look at these property lines in this particular light is because of access. And so I guess it's my thought, anyway, that if they could give a landscape easement to that individual, that, that resident, along with access as well for certain purposes, however it's described, I think that might.
Well, the landscaping agreement itself implies access to.
Right.
You know, maintain the, the existing landscaping. So access is implied within the landscaping easement.
Could they put up any landscaping walls, stones, anything else? Or is it just maintaining what's there?
I think it would be restricted to what's there now.
Okay. So if they wanted to narrow it up to fit on that eight feet in the future, you'd have to purchase that land first, it sounds like, in order to do that.
Yeah, to do any modifications, mind, it wouldn't be their property anymore. It isn't now, and it wouldn't be once those lots are sold.
Understood.
The easement agreement would be, would be between the two respective property owners, the adjoining landowner to the west or east in Cobblestone Creek, and then they would negotiate how they would want to handle the easement agreement language itself between the two private entities.
So if the owner of the property at one of the, you know, if the owner, the future owner of Lot 1 wanted to do something with that landscaping, they couldn't touch it because it's in an easement?
Correct.
And it, you'd have to have that easement in place to get this approved, I would assume.
You don't have to have the easement in place to get this approved.
Okay.
Because you can't, you can't hold Cobblestone Creek hostage to whether an adjoining landowner agrees to an easement now or, you know, a year in the future.
Right.
They shouldn't be penalized for landscaping being placed onto their property. And it's not trying to be contentious or anything. Obviously Cobblestone Creek has made a good faith effort and are trying to accommodate, like I said, the planning board's recommendations, as well as preserve the neighbor's landscaping as well.
Joe, I mean, I guess certainly we'd like to hear from the homeowner, but I mean, one consideration that we haven't talked about is that Cobblestone Creek retain a strip of land and define it for whatever purposes it's defined, and that takes at least the future homeowner of Lot 1 out of the equation.
And they could have an easement on Cobblestone Creek property, not on the landowner. It's not, not a bad idea. Maybe Cobblestone Creek doesn't like that, but they're asking for two more lots to be developed here, and we've got to figure out a way to make this work with the least amount of future pain, I'll call it that. And honestly, Cobblestone Creek was required to have an eight-foot side setback, but agreed to a three-foot side setback back in the day when that house was built, prior, you know, the previous owner. So the Cobblestone Creeks put themselves in that position just as much as anything, because they should have had eight-foot side setback, not three. So, and that was to accommodate the previous home builder. This is my perspective. I'm not, you know, and certainly free to argue the other perspective of it, but.
Right, but again, even at that time, lot, what is termed Lot 1 today could have been adjusted lot line to give the original homeowner on One Sheffield a wider setback anyway. So it was, you know, almost self-imposed.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I'm going, is any way you look at this, it was a self-imposed issue as soon as that house was provided that variance from the side setback requirements. And on it, there shouldn't have been a need to do that. And maybe they were restricted by the depth of the lot on that one line. I think it's 156 feet.
Well, Cobblestone Creek didn't request the easement. That land, the homeowner for that lot requested the, the variance at that time. It wasn't Cobblestone Creek requesting variance.
Cobblestone Creek was allowed that, right? So.
I'm not sure about the history of that.
Well, they had to agree to it. I mean, they didn't, they couldn't have just been run over by that, you know, so.
I mean, the adjoining landowners in, in a variance application for a side setback don't always agree to it. The board allows it or doesn't allow it.
And maybe the owner, the landowner persuaded the board at that time. I don't know when this was.
I mean, it would be speculation, I guess.
Yeah, right. That's, that's where I'm trying not to go, but the bottom line is, it was allowed by the planning board, and whether or not it was on objection by Cobblestone. It's, that's where we are. And now the Cobblestone wants to sell two more lots with that variance and an issue about, you know, if nothing else, if there's no landscaping on there, you still don't have access.
Yeah, I mean, the main point is, there was no restrictions placed on this at the, with the area variance or with the subdivision that was filed with this.
Right.
For future development.
But there, there was never an intent to do that without requesting a variance of the lot depth either, so. There's just a host of self-inflicted elements here and okay. So in 2005. So was this a zoning board?
It was zoning board in 2005, and there was, there was a denial in there for, I think, one side. Because of a collapsed zone around the house. And then they did get their variance for the other side.
Okay.
In that resolution, in that paragraph I pointed, it's like the third or fourth one down, it talks about the correspondence from the club.
Ryan, did you want this? Do you have a copy of this? You can look, you can have it.
Not, not to rewrite history, but again, a variance could have been avoided by a lot line adjustment at that time.
Yeah.
Just a big open field.
Although, what I think you stated at the outset was Cobblestone Creek was not in a position to give away land. Now, I guess they could have. I don't know.
Not for free.
I don't know if a lot line adjustment, it could have been a $1 credit for that matter, right? So, which technically you could probably do now as well, but still. It's kind of, I'm kind of with Al, that it's, it's a self-inflicted condition you're in right now in wanting to put two new homes on an area that was previously vacant land, I'll call it. I know it's not a forever wild or anything else like that, even though it might have shown up on some landscaper's site that way, site plan. I don't know if you understand where I'm going with this, but I.
Yeah, but I, so we listened to the board. The board's recommendation was to provide an easement, and we're providing an easement now.
I was, I was, my recommendation was to just move the lot line and provide that extra space in order.
You also mentioned easement as well, I believe.
I may have, but.
So they, they've looked at several different scenarios. This is the one that was the preference of, of the course. And obviously, like I said, originally they were looking to gift a strip of land to be a gracious neighbor, but unfortunately, just the way their club is set up, they're unable to do that.
Well, so I'd be interested to hear from the Freitas, if they're here. Be, if you could come up and I may, I'd like to hear your perspective on this. I appreciate you were not the original constructor of the home, so.
Correct, yeah. So I'm Dan Freitas. I'm at One Sheffield Court. And I do share all the concerns. I think probably my biggest concern is the fact that right now, as, as it stands, I only have two point, two and a half feet off the foundation of my house. But one of the key things that I saw in this variance is. But one of the key things that I saw in this variance is highlighted here, section two on the second page, it says, "However, the applicant has modified the house location shifting it closer to the permanent open space." That's referenced twice in this variance note. And I also, it's also referenced in this instrument survey that was provided by BME. It's stamped and it's in here as well. It's identified as permanent open space. And I think that's why the variance was given.
That's an interesting twist on this. I think the town staff was looking to go back to the original site plan. And nowhere, I think, even in the resolution or the documentation, was there, was it called permanent open space? It was called lands of Cobblestone Creek. So whether or not BME represented it correctly-
And the town did call that out in their notes. I mean, you can see it on page two. It's permanent open space.
Yeah.
And the last page, I believe.
Is that, I think that's this. Yeah. If you go to paragraph two on the second page, you said, right?
Correct. And it's also on the last page where the resolution is given.
Mm-hmm. Let's just take a look at it.
Did you have some other document that-
Yeah, I mean, it's the same document.
Did you have a little map?
Yep. It's right here on the map.
So this was done by a land surveyor of BME. Now, I wonder where they got that perspective. They may have- You know, it could have been mischaracterized because it is not a build, they weren't classified as building lots. So it may have been misrepresented as that, with that phrase. We don't know. I certainly understand your perspective.
Sure. Yep.
I appreciate it. However, I think everything that we have otherwise really characterizes that as open space. And now we're looking at how to accommodate landscaping that you've, or your predecessor placed off of the property line. Now, just out of curiosity, when you bought the property, were you aware how close the property line was?
To be honest with you, no, I wasn't. I mean, just looking at it, it's, that strip of land has been maintained by either myself or the prior owner for almost twenty years now.
Well, I'm sure you had an instrument survey done for your property to purchase it and get a bank, you know, mortgage on that.
Again, reading through, looking at that map and reading through the variance and the fact that it said permanent open space, I had no need to worry about that ever being, you know, a new building lot or anything like that.
Mm-hmm. Well, and there may have been a motivation for the planning board at the time to, or the zoning board, I'm sorry. I happen to be on the planning board at the same time, but I was unaware of this because the zoning board took this on. They may have had that representation and decided to allow the variance because of the perhaps wrongly characterized parcel next to it.
Correct.
However, I'm still struggling with leaving that lot line the way it is. And at the very least, you need the easement. I get it. Where are you and how you want to look at this? Or what would your ideal, I mean, they sound like they've reached out. I don't know if you've gotten back to them on any of this, or that's what I heard that-
No, I mean, they said if, if I wanted to accept the offer to get back to them, there was no other, hey, do you want to negotiate or anything like that? So I didn't, I didn't respond. It was addressed to David and Donna Freitas, so those people don't live at my, at One Sheffield Court, so it wasn't even addressed to me, so.
Sure, try to-
So just to answer a question from earlier, if there was a deadline on that offer, and it says in the letter that these offers are open to be accepted up till noon on December first, 2025. That since shall be, shall be accepted in writing and considered timely prior to the expiration of this offer. The club reserves the right to withdraw the offer at further notice after noon on December first, 2025.
It also sounds like it was addressed to the wrong people, potentially.
Yep.
The offer is actually already expired and can be withdrawn.
So as it stands, as I'm hearing from the applicant, thanks Keith.
Thank you.
They are providing an easement. You want to step up and, yeah, come on up and clarify it. That's fine.
After discussions with the representatives from the applicant, Cobblestone is amenable to maintaining a five-foot strip of land on either side. The landscape easement will encompass that five-foot strip of land that will be, will remain under Cobblestone Creek control. And then that will give the adjoining landlord to the west their three feet plus the additional five feet. It won't be on an adjoining landlord, which will make it cleaner. And then the same thing will be on the eastern side as well.
Okay, so you'll have two lots. There will be a strip owned by Cobblestone Creek on the east and west sides of, on the west side of lot one and the east side of lot two, is what I'm understanding.
Just a res-.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that's maybe what Al was referring to, or at least, you know.
The concept, yeah.
Yeah. All right. So that way, there's no dispute between the two property owners of new lot one and One Sheffield, or Eleven Cheshire Ridge and lot number two. And that's, to me, a lot cleaner.
Short of an outright purchase by the homeowners on adjacent properties.
I mean, in the future, I would assume that they could choose to make an offer to check Cobblestone Creek for that strip.
A little notch.
Correct?
I'm sorry?
Those lots could be, those one foot, or five-foot strips-
Still be owned by these guys.
-could, in the future, be purchased by either Mr. Freitas, excuse me.
Correct.
Or someone who may own the house after he's gone.
Yep.
Um-
Does five feet do it?
It gets it to eight feet, which was the original restriction on One Sheffield and Eleven Cheshire Ridge, I believe.
Assuming whatever landscaping is there would be maintained. No, I think that's great.
I would agree to that approach, much more than having to have two landowners dispute or try to negotiate something out. And it sounds like there's a landscape maintenance agreement or easement that would be on both of those, even though you may not need it on the east lot. On Mr. Freitas's property, you can maintain that extra five feet with this proposal, correct?
And then he would have access into that area via the easement. So then he would have a full eight-foot strip around the side of his house, basically, either in ownership or within an easement.
Okay. That was a good idea. How do you feel about that, Mr. Freitas? You have to step up to the mic, sorry.
I mean, ideally, I'm still concerned about the fact that my property line ends, you know, two and a half feet off the foundation of my house. I literally can't even walk out of the back door there. So that's concerning to me, and that doesn't address that concern.
Well, there is a way to solve that. If you purchased some width, a certain set width, whether it's five feet, ten feet, whatever, to get that strip of land for you to own. And then you wouldn't have a strip, a concert, a strip of land owned by Cobblestone Court. You'd have yours, and then lot one would be abutting parcels.
Yeah.
And you would have the side setback. So I guess that's a matter of how much do you want to spend, or do you want to spend money to buy that, or do you want to live with an eight-foot, or stretch of land to maintain?
Yeah.
Five feet of which owns, is owned by Cobblestone Court.
And the details behind it as well.
Okay. Well, let's make sure both of you are talking and, you know, back and forth. I'm sure you can fix the name on the correspondence, but I would like to see this amicably resolved. And, you know, in the future, you'll have new neighbors. I don't think they'll have a clue about any of this that's carried on, except in their deeds. So, but I'm sure you want to be good neighbors at Cobblestone Court, so. Yes, sir.
And the language of the agreement can be written up between the two private owners offline, but it could be written up so that the adjoining landlord to the west can maintain that property strip as if it's his own piece of land via the easement. He can maintain any landscaping within that as well. We would like to see that this could be approved as a conditional approval tonight to move forward with this application, though. We understand the concept. It's, all it is, is putting a five-foot line on the plans and adjusting the subplan, and we can submit that for town approval.
I'm sorry, Lisa. Okay. We have a draft resolution that would probably have to be modified. And I guess it's the pleasure of the board at the moment, but we're actually still in a public hearing that I need to close before we can move on with that. Yeah. So after hearing all this, is there anyone else, or Mr. Freitas, if you wanted to say anything else, would like to approach the board? Certainly come up to the mic, name, address, who you're representing.
My name's Derek Spederico. I'm an attorney. I own the property at 22 Buckthorne in Cobblestone, okay? I'm very much in favor of this. I'm a member at Cobblestone.
Okay.
And there's 200 members at Cobblestone that are in favor of this moving forward, all of whom live right in the area and vote right in the area. This is something, the three-foot setback was previously approved by this board and the ZBA. So that bell really can't be unrung.
Right.
And it's interesting that the rights were kind enough to reach out to the club when they got ours. You know how much the-
Richards.
Richards, by apologies. Got right down the brain, and I got it wrong. The Richards were kind enough to work out with us a very easy landscaping agreement. You want to know how much they paid for the landscaping agreement? Take a guess.
A dollar.
Okay? We're even picking up the recording fee. I'm personally picking up the recording fees to make this happen. Nice people. Okay, it happened. They reached out.
I'd just like to also note, their house is almost twenty feet off the property line.
Oh, and that's the way it was approved by the planning board, I would assume, when they issued the building permit and the final approval, correct?
Relative to the permanent open space, yes.
The other issue that I just wanted to clear up is, in 2005, when this occurred, it wasn't the club that made the application for the variance. It was the homeowner at the time and the builder who was building that house, neither of which are the club. So holding the club responsible for something that happened twenty years ago, that the club itself, which is a separate entity, was not involved in, I think is unfair. And-
So, so I'll interrupt you there for that, for a second. It's not that I'm, my point was, the club should have, at the time, a, you know, they're an involved, involved owner, adjacent property owner, whatever.
Right.
It's, when these applications come before the board, it's a public hearing. Certainly, the club could have voiced objection to that type of, you know, that's short of a side setback.
But think about it. Why would the club object to that? It's the next lot over.
Well, it's their lot, right? I mean, it's their property.
It was Vic Will's lot, actually, but the same thing, the same argument on its head could be said that if they built a smaller house there, they'd have more room for their side setback.
That's true. That's true.
Right?
Yeah, but that's what, they chose a bigger house.
They chose a bigger house.
With a three-foot side setback.
And the town approved the three-foot setback.
Because the club probably did not object to it. Because the club, at that time, had no interest in developing these other two parcels because they didn't need the-
Isn't that speculative?
What it's called out is permanent open space. To me, that seems pretty clear.
But it's not dedicated. There's nothing of record that says that.
Okay. Well, we can't unwind the hands of time.
I agree.
We're trying to solve-
The last point I want, I'll get behind this five-foot retainage by the, by the club. I think that's, although not our first effort, okay, but-
Well, we're-
If it gets it across the finish line, then it's worth doing. But technically, that's a trespass that we're kind of sanctioning here.
Understood. And that's just how we kind of talked about it at the beginning, that the principal, the first owner-
It's not without, without fault, okay? And the fault doesn't lie with the club.
But you also want a variance on the rear setback.
But couldn't that be done?
We could decline that to say, nope, the-
No, but this is just subdivision approval. Couldn't we, couldn't the board handle that at site plan approval? When there's an actual, because this is just theoretical about who's going to build what size house and how close they're going to do it.
That's not the question that Al's bringing up. He's talking about the property depth.
You're requesting a variance to the rear property line.
Yeah, because the depth was supposed to be a minimum of one hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, and it's a hundred and twenty-seven.
Now, you're talking about a hundred and twenty-seven, which is-
Which is what's being requested.
Okay.
Which could be declined by the board.
Yeah.
Well, we would hope not. The members of Cobblestone would-
We're trying to work with you, but at the same time, we'd like this to be resolved amicably. Sounds like you do too, and I got no problem with it.
Giving them a five-feet retainage solves everyone's concerns.
As long as the club's willing to keep that five feet with the possibility in the future that maybe Mr. Freitas or another future owner of the home can acquire it-
Can put an offer in on it.
And then do that, or-
He could put an offer in on the whole lot now. I mean, that's the way to do it. That would tremendously increase the value of his property if it's approved. Take the whole lot.
The whole, two lots?
Or take the one lot. Imagine how much his house would be worth then.
Well, I think it-
With a double lot in Cobblestone?
I'm not going to speculate on what he's thinking about, so.
Okay.
Eliminate the property line between the two.
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah, right. Imagine the trees he could plant then. Thank you very much.
That's a lot line adjustment we could deal with, but, so I appreciate it. Anyone else from the public have any questions?
Just to clarify, in that zoning board resolution I handed you, in like the third or fourth paragraph down, it refers to the club's correspondence, which said the club was absolutely okay with that variance.
Okay.
I'd read it, but I give it to you.
Yeah, and what I was trying to say, and I don't mean to interrupt, but it was that there is no interest at that time in developing this parcel as a two-lot additional subdivision. So back then, it was clear that, oh, we're okay with this because it's open space, that's part of the club property.
It was a previous owner, too. It was Wilmerite. It wasn't the course-
Understood, yeah.
-the ownership now.
But now, and an entity wants to do something different with that parcel. So you're kind of in a bind that, from that regard, and I appreciate you're trying to work out all the details of this. And thank you, Keith, for that. So, anyone else? Mr. Freitas, did you have any other comments you wanted to bring forward? Hope I'm saying your name right.
Yes, you are. Thank you. I appreciate it. Just wondering if there was a precedent of, has the club ever gifted or for minimal consideration, given any sort of property to any of the other neighbors in the Cobblestone development?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I can't answer that question. I don't believe there's been a subdivision of club-owned lands other than what was originally planned, like way up on the hill and, you know, Barcandune and all that. That was all part of the major plan.
Yeah.
This one appears not to have been part of a plan. It's space that was termed, deemed possibly available if you can make some adjustments and get variances, so.
Just a couple other thoughts. Just curious if anybody knows how that section of the land ended up vacant or part of. It just seems odd that all of a sudden it stops and then it starts again. Was there a reason behind that?
Well, from what we've been hearing, it's the depth of the property. It's not one hundred and fifty feet. It's only one hundred and twenty-seven, and it's on a curve of the, of one of the holes, fifteen, I think. And so, but Peter Vars is not here to jump in and say, I was here back then. It's like he's done before. So I, that'd be pure speculation on my part.
And I'm just curious how, if that was the reason, why is that not an issue or a concern today? You know, I mean, it's been sitting there for thirty-five years, and it's, you know, nothing's been built there, but now all of a sudden, it's available? I'm just curious.
As I recall from one of our first discussions, they have not built as many homes as they probably were approved to build on the entire site.
Yeah. Has that been confirmed?
I believe it has, yeah.
Yep, has been.
So if the club's looking for additional, call it revenue or financial use of the property they own by subdividing with two more lots, they have this space in terms of number of homes to do that with. I can't, and so they would have to be looking for a variance, which is what they're doing. So we would have to go along with that. And I don't see a major objection to doing the depth part, but it's the issue of your parcel next to, with the three-foot setback.
Right.
So, and that's- So, and that's what's given us, I think, the most amount of consternation, certainly me. So, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, I'm not clear. So, we've seen the language in the ZBA thing from 20 years ago about the permanent open space and the other document, that not mean anything, or what bearing does it have on people that might buy these two lots, or what bearing does it have on what we're doing now?
Well, if we approve it, it has no bearing at all, because permanent open space has been, would have been discounted, I guess, or the very least shown not to be the original intent of that parcel. It was all one big lands owned by Cobblestone Creek. And this document kind of implies, you could, you could see that it's implying an incorrect characterization of that lot, based on the fact that the original didn't have permanent open space as a labeled parcel. No one came along and said, oh, we want to make this permanent open space. I don't think there's any record of anyone trying to do that.
There's 25 or 26 acres that are in a permanent open space easement centralized within the Cobblestone Creek development.
It was a drainage, right?
Yeah, it's around the ponds, kind of centralized from north to south through the property. This is not within the area. So, when, when this was developed, this area was just always remaining lands of Cobblestone Creek. There was no restrictions on this as far as conservation easements or what. It was never designated as a forever wild land or anything. So, there are no restrictions on, on development of this. As mentioned, Cobblestone was approved for 282 lots. Currently, 270 have been developed.
Can I answer your question, Joe?
Thank you.
Okay. Al, any other?
No other comments.
I've been doing most of the talking, sorry.
I don't, I don't know if I can add much more to this. I had a similar project once where we treated this condition by way of a covenant that was placed on the property by the, by the property owner. Effectively didn't involve the adjoining properties at all. It was just something that was self-imposed of a particular geometry in order to encompass, you know, either vegetation or flooding areas or whatever. I'd just throw that out as a, as an alternative, if you, if anyone wants to consider it, with respect to a conditioned approval tonight. My take on it is, it still seems like things are up in the air.
They're offering, correct me if I'm wrong, you're offering a five-foot parcel to be indicated on the map, or your, on your survey, that shows lands remaining owned by Cobblestone Creek on both sides of this parcel. And then, this would be a two-lot subdivision of the remaining property with the appropriate setbacks.
Well, you've got two little fingers coming up along the side of the property.
Yeah. Do you still have that?
As I mentioned, the first approach by Cobblestone was to offer the five-foot strip, but after research, they're unable to do that. So, the next best options were an easement. Now, we're talking about just providing the five-foot strip, maintaining it within Cobblestone Creek lands, and having the easement on that, rather than the easement on the future prospective single-family homeowners for lots one and two.
Right.
Which is cleaner.
I think so.
We acknowledge that.
Yeah. So, it sounds like we've come to a reasonable compromise, I guess. Trish, any other thoughts, comments, questions?
I agree, further conversations are necessary to establish the easement agreement, but the principle in place of providing the five-foot strips, I think, is agreeable by everybody as, as an appropriate approach. So, what we would offer is we would, with the conditional approval, we would submit the updated subdivision plat with those strips, and then the easement agreement would be worked out between the two private entities, the adjoining landowners, and then Cobblestone Creek Country Club.
And I can, I can, I'd like to chime in here. I guess my recommendation to the planning board would be, and it's going to be contrary to what Ryan's requesting here, would be to hold off on a resolution tonight. I think this is a complicated matter. I think you, I think we have simplified it in terms of this potential approach with the, the sketch that you provided, but if we're going to have some easements, I think I'd like to see those easements on the map, as well as the updated map, so that we can be precise in the language, the approval language of the resolution, so that there's not confusion in the future. I think it would be helpful for the planning board, just to solidify, solidify the documentation so that you've, you've got a concrete resolution that's reflective of what's going on.
So, I mean, it's just five-foot strips of, of land on the plan. I don't know what more the board would get from it, but the, the agreement would be a private agreement between the two private entities.
Will that, will that be shown? Will the, I understand that the agreement's going to be private. Is there going to be any indication of that on the subdivision plat?
Yes, we will label an easement within the five-foot strip as well. So, it'd be a five-foot strip of land to be owned and maintained by Cobblestone Creek, and there'll also be a five-foot easement within the entire strip on either side.
So, would you end up with one, still just two parcels, but the, the lands of Cobblestone Creek would, would be contiguous with those two little strips?
Yep.
You wouldn't have extra, you wouldn't have four parcels here, you'd have two, correct?
So, this would all be Cobblestone.
Right. Yeah, so you don't need to create two more pieces unless you choose to sell or-
So, this would be a five-foot strip, and this would be an easement, a five-foot easement as well. Then we could, we can show those on the plans.
Yeah, I think, I tend to agree. And Trish reflected on that, too, is that there's still kind of a lot of-
So, it sounds like the negotiation, then, that's the only option for the, that we're offering the, the neighbor at this point. That's the solution, right?
Well, yeah, they'll, they'll keep the land.
Right.
They're free to, they're going to make a maintenance agree, or a, how do I, maintenance easement, landscape easement, I think you said?
Yeah, landscape easement.
Landscape easement on their property, meaning Cobblestone Creek. And then, in the future, if that, if one or more of those, one or both of those pieces was, there was an interest in each of the landowners purchasing that from Cobblestone Creek, then they could do that. And then, there would just be lot line adjustment, eliminating one or both of those, depending on what the landowners did adjacent.
Would it be reasonable to include that as a condition prior to signature, that that has to be documented that way and?
I think what, yeah, I would think Wes was saying, let's see it in January with all of that stuff put together.
But-
Yeah, it's, so it's going to be up to the, it's going to be up to you guys. I suppose you probably could do that via a condition in this draft resolution that we have. I just think it would be cleaner at the next planning board meeting, which obviously just takes more time, right? It's going to be another month. The applicant doesn't want to wait another month, but I think in concept, the planning board understands what the intent is. And we can, yeah, we can, we can certainly confirm that.
Okay, so if we, if we went ahead this evening, at the request of the applicant, I have to close a public hearing, but that's after this discussion, we could put in here, here's what we need.
Yeah.
And if there's no, if, if for some reason, something can't be totally resolved-
Won't sign off on the plans.
We won't sign off on the plans, and you have to come back and say, all right, here's what we really need to do, and we're going to modify the resolution, and-
Yep. And our plans would show the five-foot strip to be maintained by Cobblestone Creek and their remaining lands, and then an easement encumbering that five-foot strip of land from Cobblestone to the adjoining landowners for landscaping purposes.
Lisa's getting this on tape, right?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, but you, you don't want to see the revised plan today or in January?
We'd like to, with the description that he's providing verbally, we want to see that on, in, on paper, and in description, and with the easements also, one or more.
But not before the board passes.
Prior to chairman's sign. Prior to my signature.
Okay, I'm following.
Prior to Wes, so Wes can review it, and perhaps he and I can review it as well to make sure that we understand the intent. If there's any doubt about what has come before us, Wes or I could say, we need to come back to the board and discuss this, and then sign off on it.
Will there be an extension of, if, if there was a purchase desired for that strip of land? Because right now, it's expired. So, is there an extension to that? Is that still-
Yeah, so the, the ability for the adjoining landowners to purchase that five-foot strip would be in perpetuity, so they could always make an offer to Cobblestone Creek for that strip of land.
But it said that that offer was rescinded, like they don't necessarily get that offer, is that correct?
No, so that offer will be null and void with this implication, because we're still giving them the five-foot easement, but it will also be in, on Cobblestone Creek lands that, that they're going to remain under Cobblestone Creek ownership, rather than under the perspective two new lots.
Honestly, it's easier for somebody to buy a lot without that, with you owning it.
That's what I was asking, is there still an option for that, if that was so desired?
Does purchase it?
Right, instead of, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure what, if, if that's even something you're still kicking around or not, but I'm saying, I just, right now, as it stands, you know, this offer is going to-
Yeah, if they were to purchase it, it would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would just be in a ministry of lot line adjustment at that point. So, it wouldn't need to be a planning board action, per se.
Right, but it would make it clear if, say, that decision was made prior to the next planning board meeting. That's all I'm saying.
It's possible.
Yeah, I guess the offer's been made, it has, neither party has indicated they want to purchase the strip of land, so we can only move forward, and it's available for purchase. I'll say that.
Okay.
I mean, somebody could come along and buy some other part of Cobblestone Creek lands if they wanted to, I suppose, and this Cobblestone Creek was interested in selling it, but it's just like this property. So, I'm just throwing it out as a-
I think you wanted to say something else.
So, anything else, Mr. Freitas?
I mean, that, that offer to purchase it, is that just to me, or can the new owner, can they buy that? And now, you know, I'm back into the same situation that I'm into right now.
That's a good point.
And when Cobblestone talks about maintaining that-
Option two, owner of one Sheffield Court.
Yeah.
Or 11 Cheshire Ridge.
Yeah, and let's just say, I decide not to go ahead with the easement or agree to it. What does that mean in terms of Cobblestone maintaining it? Are they going to come and cut the grass? Are they going to come and maintain it?
Well, they're going to do exactly what they've been doing all along, I'm sure, and not touch it, and-
I mean, earlier, they brought up trespassing. I mean, is, is that something that they're going to come back and say?
You won't be trespassing anymore.
I'm saying if I don't agree to that easement, if I don't-
They're giving you the easement, no matter if you agree to it or not, it sounds like.
Okay.
I think he has to sign off on it.
Yeah, that's true. I don't know why you wouldn't sign off on it, honestly, that's-
Well, I haven't seen anything. I don't know what to sign off on, or what, what it means for me, so.
It's a maintenance, a maintenance easement for you to be able to mow around your landscaping and maintain the trees and whatever else is there. It's simplification, but it's being given to the owner of one Sheffield Court, no matter if it's you or your successor.
Okay. And again, you know, I brought this up in the past, that the five feet doesn't give me all of the landscaping that I have.
That's something you'll have to deal with, you know? That's five feet is, it, it's, right now, you shouldn't even be on there, I mean, technically, because it's not your property. They're giving you five feet to maintain most of it, lawn mowing and being able to actually access from front to back of the property along there. So, you could choose to, and I guess that would be the only other question, is the piece that spills over that five feet onto one, parcel one, that house, you'd have to work that out with the future owner or Cobblestone before they sell it. So, or you can, I don't know, if you can offer to buy 10 feet, and then you'd have to lot line and sell and all that kind of stuff, so.
Second. That's why. Didn't see you. I said it to you. Same one. All of your lives.
We, no, we're going to go ahead and do a conditional approval.
Of course.
Yeah.
I said it. I said it to a David.
We might have to modify this.
I'll finish that.
Is there a-
Thank you for your patience.
Okay. Anything else? Y'all set? All right, so, we're trying to figure out what, how best to treat this in the resolution draft we have. Yeah. Okay, good. Right now, I think we're done publicing, so. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Joe moves, and Trish has seconds. Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have closed the public hearing, so no other public comment, unless you wish to send letters to the planning board. And now, I guess, we have a lot of wherethas is in this draft resolution, and we're trying to figure out where we would add this discussion of two easements, or not easements, two-
Five-foot strip of land to be maintained on the west side of lot one and the east side of lot two.
Yeah.
I would run it up here, maybe.
Look at you. All right, so that goes under conditions that must be met, or before that, because we have to talk about, I mean, it, like, here's the drawing, dated whatever. What's the most recent plan? Then we have to say, to be, to be modified, indicating to-
So, I've got it drafted here as a, as a condition to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the plans, that the subdivision plans reflect the five-foot strip to be retained by the Cobblestone Creek Country Club at the eastern side of lot one, of, I'm sorry, eastern side of one Sheffield Court, and the western side of 11 Cheshire Ridge, and that private easement to the adjoining properties be depicted in these areas. That, was that the intent?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that a whereas?
Well, that would be a condition.
Oh, a condition, okay.
Yeah, it's a condition prior to approval, but I do want to mention that somewhere in these whereas things, and I want to go specifically to where the latest drawing Preliminary plan, prior submission. Refine that.
I think that comes in the resolved, just before the conditions.
In the last resolved, therefore.
Right, okay.
The last, last revised, November 24th.
Okay.
To be amended with-
Yeah, that's, so-
Early condition.
Right, right here. We're going to say, and as amended per discussion at planning board meeting December 9th, 2025, which depicts two five-foot strips of lands to be retained by Cobblestone Court Country Club, Cobblestone Creek Country Club, sorry. So, that would go in that resolved there, and we can refine that a little bit better to make sure that it's documented, and then add the condition number six that Wes just outlined in his notes. And then, we should be able to-
We'll also make a finding here, or, or a resolved about the clustered subdivision provisions, and how the planning board is, is allowing in this subdivision, the 120-foot seven lot depth for these proposed lots.
Where's that going to be?
Uh, that'll be, that'll be a further resolved.
Oh, okay. So, we got a now, therefore, and then resolved, and then further resolved after, oh, no, should be-
Right, so this should probably say, this should be also, now therefore be resolved, Uh, that'll be, that'll be a further resolved.
Oh, okay. So, we got a now therefore and then resolved and then further resolved after, oh no, should be...
Right, so this should be also now therefore be resolved, be it further resolved here. Or, we need to also further resolve. I approve the clustering amendment for the lots. We'll get the language. We'll have to do it afterwards.
Okay.
I can send it to you guys.
I think we know the intent.
Yeah, we can talk about it Friday morning if you want. Staff meeting. Okay, so I think we got both of those covered. Anybody else have any concerns? The easement language, I think Wes referenced in his...
Mentioned that the easements be depicted on the plans.
Oh, these are landscape easements.
Whether or not, I guess whether or not the private parties decide or, or enter into those easements, that's maybe beyond us, right? That's just going to have to be between the two property owners. But it's, it'll be on the plans.
It will be labeled five foot to each tax count number on each side from Cobblestone Creek.
I would also say no cost easements for the adjacent landowners for landscaping maintenance. And what was the other, somebody else made a comment? Oh, no, Mr. Freitas made a concern, was concerned about whether it could be sold to the lot one or lot two purchaser, which it shouldn't.
Correct.
So, you mentioned that the lots would be available in perpetuity to be sold to the adjacent landowners of...
Correct, not lots one and two.
And not lots one and two. So, the western lot would be available in perpetuity to the owner of one Sheffield Court and the lot, the five-foot strip or that lot owned by Cobblestone Court on the east side would be available to the owner of 11 Cheshire Ridge.
Correct.
In perpetuity. So, Lisa, that, you're going to have to listen awfully hard to this stuff.
That one I'll have to...
Okay. All right, well, you can send us copies and we'll kind of review it.
Would that be specific to saying whoever the landowner is of that house? So, we say if down the road, you know...
I would say the owner of one Sheffield.
As opposed to the specific names that you just say whoever owns.
Correct, it always goes to the land.
Yeah.
Not the owner.
Absolutely, yes. That's, that's right, Tricia. Okay. And so, whether or not Mr. Freitas wants to do anything with it, that's okay. It's just there. So, but the owner of lot one and owners of lots one or two won't have any right to purchase that out from, out from under the adjacent landowners. Okay.
Things they have it up.
Yeah, okay. So, appreciate your patience. Sometimes it's a little tough to do things on the fly and this one's a little more complicated than most. Okay. I'm going to read this. Not in detail, but I'll stop at each of the points for adding things to, just to make sure we understand it all. Okay, so, reading the resolution, we've closed a public hearing. Cheshire Ridge subdivision preliminary and final applications to PS 2025, to FS 2025, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact. And there are 12 of them. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on December 9th, 2025 and identified no significant impacts. Now therefore be resolved that the project Cheshire Ridge subdivision will not have a significant impact on the environment and that a negative declaration be prepared. And be it further resolved, and this is the discussion on the clustering amendment that Wes referred to. And then the next paragraph, resolved that the, that regarding the planning, the preliminary and final plan application from Cobblestone Creek LLC, major subdivision entitled Cheshire Ridge subdivision drawn by BME Associates dated July 25th, July 2025, received by the planning board September 17th, 2025, last revised November 24th, 2025, and modified per planning board discussions on the December, at the December 9th, 2025 board meeting where two five-foot strips of land, one on the east of lot number two adjacent to 11 Cheshire Ridge and one on the west, a lot number one adjacent to one Sheffield Court, be retained by Cobblestone Creek Country Club and with, sorry, with the, with easements to the adjacent lots for maintenance of landscaping. Planning board application to SP 2025 and to FS 2025 be approved with the following conditions. There are five of them for one and two, three are standard. Number four, that comments in a letter dated October 6th, 2025 from the Town of Farming can be addressed. Number five, that the comments in the letter dated October 14th, 2025 from La Bella Associates be addressed. Number six, Wes has got, you want to...
Do you want me to reiterate that?
Why don't you do that?
That the subdivision plan reflect the five-foot strip to be retained by Cobblestone Creek Country Club at the eastern side of one Sheffield Court and the western side of 11 Cheshire Ridge and that private easements to the adjoining properties be depicted on, in these areas.
Conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to, number one, a standard. Number two, is standard about submitting an AutoCAD format. Number three, standard. Number four, Town of Victor highway permits be obtained for, be obtained for each lot for the water service connection and for the installation of driveways. And be it further resolved, the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter.
So, Joe, just one last thing.
Which is?
I'm afraid to have that perpetuity offer.
You could add it. So, if we had a number five, Lisa, under ongoing conditions that stated the fact that the parcels retained by Cobblestone Creek Country Club be available in perpetuity to the adjacent existing landowners of one, either one Sheffield driver, please, and 11 Cobble, Cheshire Ridge, thank you, too many words. So, yeah, we'll refine that a little bit, but we'll put that as number five. Thank you, Al. Okay, so with all those wonderful additions and modifications, do I hear a motion to approve? Don't all speak at once.
I'll move.
Al moves. Well, you're second. And Joe, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried or opposed? I guess it's carried 5-0.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Yep, I appreciate your patience in helping us work through this. And I hope that it, the settlement goes well with everyone and that you all can be good neighbors. So, Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy Hanukkah for those who might celebrate and Happy New Year. See you in, after the first. So, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Got moves. And all in favor? Again, Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
That's the most amount of work over two lots I've ever seen.